Pretty neat, huh? Well, it would be interesting to see if it's still up.
No, it's not different. I just wondered if you wanted to heart the thing, so it was just that.
I'm okay.
Okay, well, I'll keep it right there in case you do.
How are you, sir?
Oh, that's right.
Mayor.
Yeah, okay.
Pretty well healed.
Yeah, just so we can open the... Yeah. Hi. Good evening. Welcome to our Tuesday, February 27th. Hard to believe it's the end of February. Meeting for the City of Grass Valley. And the first thing we're going to do is the flag salute. If I could, Martin, would you lead us, please?
I want to do this in two flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So. Feel a little better opening with a flag salute and then reading all this stuff and then doing the flag salute and opening the meeting. So, thank you. And I want you to know that the city welcomes you to its meetings, which are scheduled at 7:00 PM on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. Your interest is encouraged and appreciated. This meeting is being broadcast live on Comcast Channel 17 and is being recorded by NCTV and is scheduled for rebroadcast on Channel 17. In addition to being broadcast live on TV, it is also being broadcast live on the Internet of the City of Grass Valley, www.citygrassvalley.com and click on Meetings on video. Council chairs, council chambers are wheelchair accessible and listening devices are available. Other special accommodations may be requested by the clerk 72 hours in advance of the meeting. Action may be taken on any agenda item. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. Agenda materials are available at City Hall, Public Library, and the city's website by checking on each of the PDF icons. Staff reports and background information related to regular agenda items are available at City of Grass Valley. Materials related to an item on this agenda submitted to the council after distribution of the agenda packet are available for public inspection in the city clerk's office at City Hall during regular business hours. Such documents are also available on the City of Grass Valley website, subject to the city staff's ability to post the documents before the meeting. So, the meeting is called to order and we did the pledge of allegiance and the roll call.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Arbuckle?
Yes.
Councilmember Foyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout?
Yes.
Mayor Levine?
Yes. I'm here, I think I'm here. Agenda approval, the city council reserves the right to hear items in different order in order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Are there any changes in the agenda?
No changes from staff.
It's from council?
No.
Okay, thank you. There is no action to be reported out of closed session. And we have no introductions or presentations set in effect tonight. So, the next item we're going to is public comment. And there is a time limitation of three minutes per person for any items that are not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction or interests of the city. Please come to the podium at this time for those items. Please come to the podium when the item number and subject matter are announced and speak into the microphone on items that are on the agenda. When recognized, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to submit written information at the time of meeting needs to furnish 10 copies to the city clerk in advance to allow for distribution to the council, staff, and the media. And during public comment, we do not respond to that. That is for you to make a comment. And... So, this is the time for public comment, okay? If somebody's here who wants to speak on public comment?
At Thomas Morgan Ranch Drive. A recent article was published in the Union with an obvious bias to instill doubt in how Grass Valley's new sales tax measure would be used and left the reader with the impression that maybe there was a lack of oversight on the existing Measure N. As the chair of the existing Measure N Oversight Committee, I was disappointed to read something that was so biased and not rooted in facts. Measure N was approved in 2012 and had three priorities that it funded: police, fire, and streets. The police department was able to fund five new officers and replace numerous old vehicles and equipment. The fire department was able to fund five new fire personnel, replace vehicles, and acquire two fire engines and equipment. The funding for Measure N was also used for the Brunswick-Sutton and Catherine Lane repaving projects. Transparency has been paramount in this process. The Oversight Committee meets three times a year or on an as-needed basis. We review the income generated and where the dollars are proposed to be spent and the actual expenditures. The meetings are announced in advance, open to the public, subject to the Brown Act, and the committee has been educated in regard to the Brown Act. City council has no influence over the proceedings of the Oversight Committee. Measure E funds will be used in the same manner for the items talked about in its proposal with a fourth funding priority, parks and recreation. It will still include police, fire, streets, and sidewalks. Small rural communities like Grass Valley rely on sales taxes. Hopefully, a majority of our citizens understand this and will vote yes on Measure E as an investment in our community. There will be an Oversight Committee under the proposed ordinance appointed by each of the city council members. Any citizen can apply for the position. As an advisory committee, we review and discuss proposed expenditures in detail with department heads, the city manager, and the director of finance. We trust that our city council will follow through on the proposed uses of the proceeds for Measure E, just as they have with the Measure N funds. One of the purposes of Measure E is to make Measure N permanent. Measure N has a sunset clause and will terminate in five years if not extended by the passing of Measure E. Just imagine what would happen and what would be the result of terminating the five police and five fire personnel and under Measure N there were no funds for equipment needed. We cannot let this happen. I will vote yes on Measure E, and I encourage the citizens of Grass Valley to do the same. Thank you.
Is there any other comment from the public at this time?
Good evening, Mayor Levine and fellow city council members. Thank you for your efforts to assist our cluster massage. We read in the newspaper that the police department is looking at changing the ordinance to accommodate our customers who work under need of massage in the early evening hours. We were told that the city council is a pro-business council and that we could appeal to you and you would listen to our needs. We appreciate your efforts. We look forward to learning about the past changes in the weeks to come. Thank you.
Matthew Coulter, Grass Valley. Grass Valley needs a warming shelter. There's a lot of people on the streets that have no place to go. Hospitality House obviously has their place, but a lot of people can't get in there. Today, at the Board of Supervisors, Dan Miller mentioned with his talk with Doug LaMalfa coming for the 2019 budget from DC. No more Section 8, no more housing vouchers, major, major cuts coming to all this stuff. So, I think the city really needs to ramp up the fact that there's going to be more homeless, not less homeless, and to continually tout that Grass Valley does the lion's share of the low-income housing. I understand from reliable sources, it's true, per capita truckie's number one, Nevada City number two, Grass Valley number three. The graffiti that's going on in our local streets has just exploded in the last, especially last month. Stopped at Caltrans today and asked them to paint out a few things on their property. And by the style, it seems like most of it's done by one person, so hopefully we can catch that individual. Thank you.
Anybody else who has comment? Okay, consent items. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless before the city council votes on the motion to adopt. Members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action. Any changes from council, staff?
No changes from staff.
Public. I will entertain a motion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Arbuckle?
Yes.
Councilmember Foyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout?
Yes.
Mayor Levine?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay. Next item is a notice public hearing, approval of resolution number 2018-13, amending the wastewater capacity charge. And who's going to do that?
That will be me.
Oh, I was looking for Bjorn.
Yeah, Bjorn's here, but tonight I will talk about this. Tim Keiser, your city manager. We're here, staff's before you tonight to request council consider modifying the capital project list for the city's AB 6000 impact fee program. This does not change the actual fee itself. It just adds a project and reduces the scope of another project, so a no net impact over the total dollar amounts for the impact fee program. Council back in 2007 approved sewer capacity impact fee study and the associated program, and those fees came into effect in January of 2008. In August of 2016, the city completed a wastewater system master plan, which identified necessary improvements throughout the city. As part of this, they identified one element that would potentially provide some assistance for development in our southern sphere. Specifically, the, some people call it the Bear River Mill Site. One development was called South Hill. It would also assist those properties adjacent to that. It would also assist the properties below Kmart or south of Kmart, sometimes called the Berryman Ranch area. What staff is proposing and what was studied in our master plan is the addition of a regional lift station somewhere in that area that would provide service for both, basically, the southern sphere. Somehow, the flows would need to get underneath Highway 49 to the Berryman side, but the lift station is the lowest on the Berryman side, so we'd want to locate it on that side. And then that would serve potential development from all those areas I just discussed. Staff looked at an estimated cost in addition as part of the process for this. We believe development's fair share of that cost is about a little less, a little over a million dollars. The total project cost is around $1.3 million. Some of that cost is associated that we would want to remove our lift station from Taylorville that we currently operate, that is scheduled for replacement, and actually have that all gravity down to this regional lift station. So, we reduce the number of lift stations we have, reduce our energy costs and some other things, and just make it a little better system for us long-term. That connection of that system would not be part of the impact fee program. That would have to be paid for out of rates or other fees. The project that we are reducing is associated with the Butler Street program. That was, is currently in our impact fee program. We would be reducing it by the $1,066,000 that would be associated for the construction of the new regional lift station on the South Sphere project. That is not a project that is a high priority at this point in time and has actually been reduced in scope and shown to reduce in scope in our master plan because Kenny Ranch, which was originally planned in our sphere when we were looking at things back in 2008, has been pushed out. And the sewer service, excuse me, is not in the same timeframe as the Berryman Ranch. So, we can look at that in future projects, and if it is still needed, we can expand it. There is enough money in there to make the improvements that are required under the master plan of upsizing some pipes. It would just not upside as it to the ultimate project to handle some of the Kenny Ranch flows that we're looking to come through that area. So, with that, staff has a resolution. Also included in the staff report is a little map showing the area that this lift station would serve, the southern portion, which I kind of discussed, a cost estimate of the new lift station, and then the revised table, which is what action councils would be looking, or staff would be looking for councils to adjust that table in our impact fee program. With that, I open it up for any questions.
Jeff?
No questions.
This is a notice public hearing. Anybody in the audience who have any questions?
Matthew Coulter, Grass Valley. The Bear River Mill Site, I understand, is going to be the new county yard. So, will the county yard need to be tied into our sewage system? Is one question. And the other question, how is this going to impact Wolf Creek also? Thank you.
Those are your two questions? Okay. Tim, if you could respond, please.
Okay, so, the first question is the county yard. I do not know what their plans are for connection as far as sewer or for a septic system. I mean, it would be able to serve that area, but there also is the remaining portion that was not purchased by the county, and that would also be able to be served from this area. This is master planned. There is still the issue of how you get the pipe underneath the highway that would need to be looked at, and then also the collection. But this regional lift station on that side of the freeway would basically serve from McKnight all the way down. So, any of those properties that are adjacent to LeBar Meadows as you get down all the way to Bear, Rare Earth and their property and the future county property could all be served from this location. Net impacts to Wolf Creek would need to probably, would definitely be studied with any project that would move forward. I personally would view that there would be a benefit because we would be taking septic systems offline and putting them into our sewer system that would hopefully provide a higher level of treatment if they're having septic problems. And that would be just a question I do not have an answer for right at this point in time, whether or not any of those properties have septic issues. I do know this would allow them to probably expand if they were able to connect to a sewer because they would be able to have a higher density on their property.
Now, as you said in your report, it would replace the Taylorville lift site.
So, we have an existing small little lift station at Taylorville, and this would be proposed connecting that gravity system all the way down to the new proposed regional lift station location.
I don't see any other public questions, so I'm going to close the public hearing part of it. And any other questions by council of staff?
Just one quick comment. I think that if our goal is to put houses up, then this is a good opportunity to do so by regionalizing and, you know, creating a little bit more of a cost savings for some potential developments to happen. That's, I think it's a good thing, and I really appreciate staff bringing this, bringing this forward and coming up with some pretty clever ideas. There's no point in having a pot of money that sits on the side that we, we don't ever see us spending it. Let's put it in the area where we can actually use it and get something done. So, I appreciate Bjorn and Tim and everybody else, staff, that have worked on this project. So, thank you much.
Good, yeah.
With that, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 2018-13, modifying the wastewater capacity charge development, impact fee capital project list for the city's wastewater system, AB 1600 impact fee.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is item number six, is Administrative Planning Commission Recommendation on the Design of a Proposed City of Grass Valley Entryway Sign. Staff recommends that the city council receive... You'll report to us what...
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Lance Low, Community Development Department. Let's see if we can get a signal here. There we go. Before you tonight is a planning commission recommendation on a proposed design of an entryway sign. Sign's located corner of Neal and South Auburn Streets. It's a City of Grass Valley sign. And the architect sitting beside me here on the right is Mr. Robert Wallace. Here's aerial photograph you see at the corner of South Auburn and Neal Street. It's located where the existing entryway monument sign is. The existing improvements include an entryway sign, uplighting, an ore cart, and a 25-foot flagpole along with a decorative paving here, paver here. As the city council is aware, the city's been seeking to develop a sign program for key locations for entryway signs. Staff in 2016 enlisted the help of Mr. Robert Wallace and to come up with a design theme that included essentially three concepts. One, reflects the community. Through design and materials reflects both the historic past and strong future of the community. Secondarily, it's, it needs to be affordable. There are potentially 20 locations the entryway monuments could be located, and certainly we need a program that is going to be relatively affordable, have a realistic budget. Lastly, but not leastly certainly, is that the sign needs to be scalable for different locations. This sign is 20 feet in height, and we'll need signs that have varying heights at certain locations down to as small as four feet to accommodate small footprints. By way of background, as the council will recall, on November 22nd, 2016, the city council received a comment on this and directed staff to vet this design through the planning commission, other agencies, organizations, namely the Grass Valley Downtown Business Association. On January 16th of this year, the planning commission considered the item. The planning commission received a number of comments and recommended that the council consider this design contingent upon the design comments. And there's essentially eight comments. There's a little, a few more than that, but those are the gist of it. That's also included in your staff report, those comments are. And then moreover, on February of this year, the Downtown Grass Valley Business Association recommended approval of the design as submitted. And that's in attachment two of your staff report, excuse me, exhibit two of your staff report. The design essentially has three elements. It has a vertical Grass Valley sign element. The sign contains a two-foot wide steel flange column that is 20 feet height. The steel wide flange is wrapped with half corrugated pipe with a 12-inch haloed letters as shown on the illustration here. In the backdrop of the vertical element, an eight-foot-high mine rock quarter-round wall approximately six feet in width frames the vertical element. You'll see the wall in the backdrop there. And lastly, it's a fire station bell located behind the mine rock wall. It's an appropriate 16-foot-high structure. The bell will relocate from the old fire station, and the bell structure, because it's a half-round corrugated pipe on both sides of the bell, and has a cap to frame the bell. The existing 25-foot-high flagpole is also shown, and that again is an existing flagpole. Here's elevations from various viewpoints. And here's a scaled-down version. This is a 10-foot-high version of that vertical element. And with that, staff is asking the city council to receive further, further public testimony and consider the recommendations by the planning commission. That concludes staff's presentation. Robert Wallace can certainly address any comments or concerns to the council or the public man. Thank you.
Back up there, the list of the eight suggestions that came from the planning commission.
So, if, if I could, there's a little bit more I'd like to add to that. In our designing, Robert Wallace met with the volunteer firefighters, and the, the bell happens to be the bell that's off of the fire station here and is a historic bell for our community. And the backside of the rounded area where the bell is, is this is to honor the Grass Valley volunteer firefighters, the 150 years of their, their commitment to Grass Valley, approximately 150 years, the third oldest volunteer company in the country. And on the backside, we had discussed also attaching the bell, the bell schedule that we used to have, I believe, and plaques to honor those fallen firefighters. There are three of them that we had discussed with the volunteer firefighters, that we were going to also accommodate that and have carry on and be able to have them come together at this site as well on particularly important days. So, that's part of the plan with the fire bell. Charlie Jacobs, when we do comment, will speak more to that because he's been involved for a number of years trying to move forward on this, but I just wanted to put that part of the historic, you know, not, not only is the brick on top of the wall from a historic fires, the historic fire station in Grass Valley, but the, the understanding of the history of the fire department would also be placed on, on the inside of that wall so that people could be able to understand the, the long history that the fire department has had as a volunteer element in our community. So, I thought I'd just want to make that clear. It kind of got left out in the plan. I didn't make the planning commission meeting, so.
So, just to kind of go through there, so I'm assuming, assuming that these were concerns that they had because they didn't really offer up any suggestions except to put an ore cart in the design, but these were...
It's there.
Yeah.
They want to keep it there.
Okay.
It's not in the design. The ore cart is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so they want to keep the ore cart there.
Well, yeah, one of the comments of the planning commission was, could we incorporate the ore cart into the design? Alternatively, if we couldn't keep the ore cart into the design, it was suggested that the ore cart be given back to the native sons of the Golden West, whom apparently donated the ore cart initially. So, that was a discussion.
Not to take anything away from our mining heritage or ore carts. There's numerous ones around town and I'm sure that, you know, the city would be happy to send that back or to try and find another suitable location at a different. But I, I really like the sign, the way that it's been designed. You know, the security issue, the height issue, the bench in the design, there's all, there's, there's, there's certain things that if you, if we worried about the safety and security and graffiti and damage, we would build nothing anymore. So, I think the city needs to have a plan to address any of those things that might happen, including the maintenance and graffiti obviously are two, two in the same. Streetlight conflicts, what was the concern there?
Well, as you see, the, there are a few streetlights, a couple of streetlights in, in front of the sign, about twelve to fifteen feet in height. They're existing, the existing signs there, it's the existing situation. You know, we, from a staff standpoint, believe the vertical, verticality of the sign will diminish that more so than it is currently.
They're concerned that there's going to be too much lighting or too.
Well, just from certain views, the streetlights would block the sign itself, so.
It's a fluid place that you're walking in and driving by or it's very, very visible, that corner's very visible and the sign is far larger, more imposing than the existing one that's very visible right now.
And if you look at the, the stoplight that is present adjacent to where the sign would be, it's actually one of the shorter ones. It's, it's, it's down. It's probably, it's probably, I have not measured it, but I would estimate it's probably in the twelve-foot range height.
So, I, I mean, I, you know, have watched the, this prog, you know, progression on this sign and the discussion and everything that, you know, I really appreciate incorporating the bell in there for the, you know, for the fire department. And I really think that as downtown changes and improves and, you know, things happen, that you need to update what you look like. And that particular sign's been there for a very long time and I think it's time to move on with something new.
I pinned it.
Yeah, and in my issue with the bench, the bench issue, so I believe you need to put benches in places where at times they can be supervised. And I speak to experience because I have benches in front of my business and it's great and people use them and they appreciate them. And on a warm sunny day, there'll be whole conversations taking place, but if someone's out there smoking or doing something that they shouldn't be doing, it's up to us to take, to, as merchants, to take care of that. And I think if you put benches over here without, you know, in a parking lot basically, you'd be asking for perhaps some problems that we don't want to have here. You know, we've opened up the Elizabeth Daniels Park now during the day, so there's benches over there for people to sit. There's places for people to sit over in front of this, the restaurants across the street and there's other bench opportunities in downtown. I don't think that this is an appropriate place for it. That's, that's all I got.
That's pretty good.
I think Robert did a good job.
I think Robert did an excellent job and I agree with everything you said and I especially agree with the fact that like, one of my biggest challenges I've had as things come through the planning commission and up to us is the fact that, you know, we, 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 we direct people to use gold country architecture and I always argue the fact that gold country architecture is not just dropping a ore cart in front of something. And I really think that Robert's taken some elements of our architecture here and done it in a fashion that grasps those little elements without having to absolutely duplicate, you know, the tin roofs, the ore carts and everything that we've, we've been doing over and over and over and over. I, I'm just so glad that there's something fresh. So, I, I appreciate it and I am in full support of, of what Robert's done here.
Yeah, I am as well. I really like the, the overall design. You did a great job, Robert, so I'm echoing everybody else's comments there. But what I'm really excited about is the volunteer firefighter bell, that, that element of the city history that not a lot of people know about and who Charlie will definitely educate us on it tonight, correct?
Right.
All right. So, this is something that is going to be a future monument to our firefighters, volunteer firefighters and the, the history that they have with our city. So, incorporating that with a really nice design is something that's going to be a amazing facelift to our city entryway. So, thank you.
I'm not going to forget you.
I think everybody already said it. I was going to talk about the bell. Thank you. I think this is a great, overall, it's a great design and I, and I agree with Jason. It's time that we do something other than ore carts or that type of thing even though we are a mining community. We're, our history is mining, but our history is also our, our volunteer firefighters as well. So, putting that bell in there is, is really, really a great idea and it'll actually be a, a great focal point for people coming into the community because they'll look at the bell and then they're going to want to know why the bell is there. So, and then by putting the stuff that's there, they'll, they'll get another piece of our community that they probably would never have had. So, good job.
If, if I could at this time, Charlie, would you come, come and say a few words just because you might know a few more things than I was able to explain? And thank you for all the time you put into helping this.
Charlie Jacobs, one-one-five Boden Avenue, isn't that what you want? Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you very much for everything you're doing to support what we did here as volunteers for so many years. The Grass Valley Volunteer Fire Department started in eighteen fifty-three. That only lasted for a few years. They had a tumultuous start, but in eighteen fifty-eight, it became solid and it stayed until we got paid staff like Steve back here. He wouldn't be here as paid staff if it wasn't for the volunteers that saved this town over and over and over again. I notice you got a map out here of the old Chinatown. Did anybody ever stop and look at that?
No.
In eighteen seventy-seven, Chinatown got wiped out with a fire. Imagine that. You know, those little houses, those Joss houses always had little, little candles and stuff. That might have been the start of it, but that could have taken out the whole town. That was right in the center. We did have a couple of other fires that did practically wipe the town out. In eighteen ninety-six, all of Mill Street was gone, but in eighteen fifty-five, that was the fire. It was called the Great Fire and that's what it's known as, is the Great Fire. September thirteenth, eighteen fifty-five, about eleven o'clock at night over here in the corner of, of Main and, and South Auburn Street, fire started in an old hotel and a few hours later, it had burned thirty acres of Grass Valley, almost decimated the whole town. About the only thing that really survived was a guy by the name of Old Block. You ever heard that name before? Old Block worked for Wells Fargo and Company. Wells Fargo, big, big banking company. Their bank got burned down except a portion of the sign still remained. And the next morning, he got ahold of a bunch of stevedores. They went up to where the bank was, which was right next to the Holbrook, and they managed to bring the bank vault safe down to Mill Street. He saved that sign and put it up on top of the vault and then added another sign, Wells Fargo, open for business. Old Block went on to become president of that bank and went to San Francisco, quite a famous guy, but he got his start right here in Grass Valley. Grass Valley is the launching pad. Nevada County's the launching pad for so many significant things in California. First long-distance telephone lines were right around the corner, right down here at, at Smartville and Timbuktu, but first electrically lit cities west of the Mississippi. It wasn't LA or San Diego, it was Grass Valley and Nevada City. They were the first ones that were electrically lit. At one time, they, they talked about making Nevada City the capital of the state, but then again, they were talking about making Downeyville the capital at one time too and a lot of that stuff went away. Well, anyhow, so the fire department, the volunteer fire department, we probably had tens of thousands of our local citizens that volunteered, just like the five of you really are volunteers. Yeah, you get a stipend for being here, but you're basically volunteering. You're, you're taking your time, your day, hours out of your personal time that you could be spending doing something else. These guys were doing the same kind of thing, but they were fighting for your property and the value of your property and the lives of all the people that lived here in Grass Valley. If it wasn't for the volunteer, we wouldn't have a Grass Valley. That's the bottom line. And thank you for allowing us to preserve this bell in a really auspicious, very visible spot in town, probably the best spot. When this whole thing came up, I heard you on the radio a couple of years ago, Jason, you were saying, hey, we got some money and we'd like to have some projects. So, immediately I got together with Mike Dickey and we took a drive and we went all the way down Highway forty-nine. We looked at every bell, at every fire station, at every school down the line, took pictures of them, came back, made up a proposal, got ahold of Howard, and our original proposal wasn't going to be where it is now. It was a much less desirable location. But our concept was to save this bell so we could still ring it. We ring this fire bell now in honor of firefighters that have passed away. Anybody that's ever been in the Grass Valley Volunteer Fire Department has that distinct honor of having that rung. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, we don't ring it for mayors. If you haven't been in the fire department, you don't get it.
I've had my bell rung too many times.
It took all your hair away, man. We've got, we've got a lot of people that have been behind this project from the get-go and Howard has been one of the mainstays. He's really been very supportive of this whole thing. He was the one that came up and said, well, you know, we may have another location for you. That's all he told us on our first meeting. We sat down with the city manager and, and the city manager then and we discussed what we had, we showed our proposal, gave him a brochure, and a few weeks later, we find out that, no, we've changed that location. It's not going to be over here, it's going to be down here, highly visible. This bell was rung for a lot of different reasons. The primary reason was to ring out fires wherever the fire was. We didn't have medical aids in those days. They didn't come until Hollywood and Rescue Eight and, and Emergency One and all those kind of programs way back when. Yeah, you remember Rescue Eight, don't you? Yeah, as soon as I said it, she smiled. That was a long time ago. Most people have never remembered that. Well, anyhow, these, the, the, the bell had a, a, a map that went along with the city and we're going to put that right on this monument. This, this is going to be a wonderful tribute. We're going to have that original bell from nineteen, or map from nineteen oh nine that shows the various ways they broke the town up into various quadrants and they would have a sequence of bells that they would ring out and the guys would look at that and know exactly where the fire was in town, very similar to what we used to have until about, what, fifteen years ago when we took out all the game well fire alarm boxes. Those all had three digits on them. I know this because my uncle made sure that that happened. He was the alarm superintendent and he converted all those two-digit boxes that started out in about nineteen twelve and went up until he died in nineteen sixty-four. He converted all those two-digit boxes to three-digit boxes because we had a hospital up here that needed to have a fire alarm system tied to the Grass Valley Fire Department, Grass Valley Volunteer Fire Department. We were still volunteer then.
Territorial.
Well, anyways, I'm going kind of long here, but the, the idea here is this bell was used to ring out fires. We also rung it for firefighters' funerals. They also used to ring it when firefighters had babies. They would go out there and they would ring that bell. Why would they do that? Because that child may someday become fire chief of this fire department. Everybody that's ever served in this volunteer fire department was very proud of it. And I'm very proud of this young man back here because he was also a volunteer before he was a paid staff. He was volunteer when I was paid staff and I was with CDF too, but I also put twenty years in with this department. I love this department. My uncle was one of those three names that's going to go up on this monument. Those three guys gave their lives. Nobody else in this town has given their life up for our town. Nobody. I think that's all I need to say. Thank you very much.
I wanted to thank you and Mike for your perseverance and the amount of time you've had.
Mike would have been here tonight, but he and his wife are both ill and he's not going to be able to make it, but I told him I'd be here for him.
He better be watching.
What's that?
He better be watching.
Oh, yeah, Channel seventeen, where's the camera?
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
Any questions?
No, we're good. Okay. Any other public comment?
Bob Branstrom from Grass Valley. I happened to be at the city planning commission when this came up before and I was actually delighted to get up. Normally, I'm not a fan of public art, but I was delighted to get up and say, I really like this design. I think they did a really good job on it. One of the other things I did suggest was including a bench there and I'll tell you why I did that because I heard a different opinion up here. The reason is just recently, the city council approved that corner as a public parking lot and there will be a lot more foot traffic there. And I thought it would be much more inviting and pedestrian friendly if we had a bench there and I don't see the same kinds of problems that council member Swarthout has mentioned. So, I will still put that out there as an idea I think the council should consider. Thank you.
Matthew Coulter, something's always consistent in the artist's renditions are the trees, they always look so awesome. The tree that's located there now is sick and damaged and will never grow to maturity around this structure. Also, the flagpole right now, the flag gets stuck in the tree because the flagpole is too undersized for the size of the tree. So, oftentimes, the flag is stuck in the tree. And still tonight, nobody here from the historical commission, I don't think, and I know that they were interested in this. I'm sorry to see they're not involved. And I still hope at some point, we can bring back the heart of the gold country, either in a mural or some kind of an art piece because I felt like once that piece left the back of the Delora, a lot of things changed in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with those comments, is there any other comment from the deus or can we make a motion to move forward with this part of what we're doing? Pardon?
Talking about you, go ahead.
That'd be the first time, yeah, okay. Yeah, and anything else? Okay, so, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I was just looking for that.
Resolution number?
Isn't it for just direction?
Yeah. So, what we, where we go from here is to get a bid and to spec it out and draw it and do all that.
So, I would make a motion that we send this back to staff to bid the sign as presented and I will say that we, there's other opportunities maybe over there to do some benches. I don't know, I don't know if we want to incorporate it into this, but we'll figure out a way to make that a little more friendly. We haven't installed the equipment yet for the public park. I mean, it's been a public parking lot basically for as long as I've been around. So, I would make the motion to have you guys go back and bring it back to us with the final documentation to, and a timeframe because that's the next question that we will get asked in public is when's this going to happen? So, a cost estimate and a timeframe. And then also to research how we would, how we would get the ore cart back to whoever donated it to the city and, or to see if we could relocate it. It would be an awesome element to have over at Elizabeth Daniels Park, which is right across the street.
Second, that very long motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Cool. Could I just make, this, this project has been over ten years in the making and so it is nice to have a conclusion or a possible conclusion. Okay, with that, reports from council members. Jan, would you like to start off because you've been flying everywhere?
Um, let's see. Last week, I was in Southern California for the strategic planning meeting for the League of California Cities and basically what we're doing is setting goals for what direction we want the league to go into. It's, it's still in the, in the, it's planning stages, so our next one will be in April in South San Francisco. Attached with that was the league board meeting and which I have a copy of the agenda if you're interested in every, all the handouts are in the council office for you to review. I know Howard looks and reads all of it because he told me.
Takes weeks.
There is only one thing on there that I really would like you all to pay attention to and it's a potential ballot initiative, AG seventeen hundred dash fifty amendment one, and it's very likely going to be on the November ballot. It's labeled the Tax, Fairness, Transparency and Accountability Act of two thousand and eighteen. This could be, if passed, could be extremely harmful, almost as dangerous, as harmful as the loss of redevelopment. So, I just urge you all, look, take a look at it and see what it is. There's a lot. There's a lot of things in it that could hurt us. I also attended the Red Light Ball, which was fabulous as always, honoring our firefighters and law enforcement officers. We had, the two honorees this year were our two Grass Valley police officers. And that's always great, and it was well attended. Saturday, I'm off to Washington DC.
Are you going to make rules about?
I've never been before, so I'm kind of, I'm a little excited. I've been a little excited about going, so. I have a good time.
Well, I, I got some horrible flu-like sickness, so I got wiped out. So I couldn't do anything but recover.
I wonder why I saw your check every time I was going to Dorsey.
Yeah, I was laid up. They really didn't have a concept of time. So really, it was unfortunate I couldn't make the Red Light Ball. I had some other event to go to, which I couldn't do. But I hear you, the council represented well. And the city Grass Valley Police Department was recognized through the two young individuals. So I'm going to pass the time now to someone else who did something.
I haven't done anything. Now, I also.
You've been working on Foothill Celebration, which we're trying to find out about.
Yes, this Saturday. pending weather is the Foothill Celebration in downtown Grass Valley. Keep you posted on that.
So just ask a quick question. All the events in downtown have been rain or shine.
Is it rain or snow?
But a foot of snow doesn't qualify for rain or shine.
Yeah, there's a little, there's a little problem with the snow.
That's scary.
Tomorrow morning is the Downtown Association Board Meeting. I will be there and Red Light Ball. Last week, to talk about economic development. And we'll have more, more to come on that in the future.
I attended the ERC Executive Committee Meeting where we have identified our speaker for the Economic Summit. It's going to be David Roland Holst. He's a professor of economics with UC Berkeley. He's a leading authority on agricultural, economic development, and environmental economic policy. Here, he's pre-dynamic speaker, so hopefully. There is a date, but I'm not going to announce it until I know that that's going to be the date.
It's going to snow.
It's in April. And I promise that it will be brief. Brief lunch, highlighting The Economist and very, very little of everything else. So more people will hopefully come and we can get in, get the information we need, and get out of there. And then been working with a lot of the chambers, Nevada City, Grass Valley, South County, Lake of the Pines, trying to work together with a bunch of folks, the county. Hopefully, we'll be funding some additional tourism funds. So we're trying to get everybody together to, what's the best use of those funds? So rock and wood, we, we get everybody aligned.
So I was fortunate enough to go to the Red Light Ball as well. I didn't get to dance. My date took me home early.
Nobody really danced.
I have one question. Did the microphones work better tonight? Was everybody, so we're getting tuned in. And I had a comment, I probably should have done this before this part, about if we could have staff write a letter to Rudy Gere Foundation and thank them for their help in funding our animal, our beautiful German Shepherd that's coming along. I don't know if, and maybe staff. So we do appreciate that, and we will get a letter off to them. Is that okay? Okay. And I've been working also with the Center for the Arts because they'll be on the go at some point this year and trying to figure that all out. And a lot of venues in Grass Valley and trying to figure out the best way of moving along is a challenge for this coming year. And we'll take a lot of patience by all of us in the community. It's, you know, I just did a quote, and when you see it, it's, you know, downtown is the living room of our community. And, and the Center for the Arts right now is our heart and soul. So, you know, it's really important that we continue to keep that venue pumping along.